For a recording by the League of Women Voters. It will be on their website early tomorrow morning after it's downloaded this evening. So you can be able to see it there or check some of the things that were said and all those things. But that's why these microphones are here. Otherwise, we're just going to have to be considerate, and I'll ask the candidates to also speak up as you will when it's your turn. Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Warren Pepper. I'm the moderator for this city council forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters here in the Charleston area. A candidate forum is not a debate. It's an opportunity for candidates to share their platforms and for voters to educate themselves. To keep the flow of our forum, we will have an official timekeeper, and she is seated in the front row, Judy Pepper. It's her name. And we have supper arrangements later. So she will keep that time as it needs to be. So Judy is keeping the time, and for each of our candidates, Judy will hold up a sign that says you've got 30 seconds remaining at a certain point, and then you'll get a stop sign when you are asked to then end your speaking on that particular topic. All the organizations sponsoring this candidate forum are nonpartisan organizations. They've not endorsed any candidate. This is a nonpartisan event. On November 7th, voters will choose four town council members to help lead the city of the Isle of Palms. I still almost trip when I say that because I've so been familiar to it being the town of Isle of Palms, and now it's a city full-blown and growing every day. Let me now introduce our candidates. I'll go through them alphabetically, and then we will have our opening statement here in just a moment. We're going from here to the other end, first with Mr. Tim Armudie, Elizabeth Campson, Ashley Carroll, Brian Duffy, Scott Pierce, Kevin Popsen, Rusty Streetman, and Jimmy Ward. Now, our candidates will have 60 seconds for an opening statement, starting with Mr. Armudie. The candidates will also have 90 seconds to respond to questions in rotating order by their seat location. For example, you know, the first question eventually is going to be directed to Ms. Campson because Mr. Armudie is going to be first with the opening comments, then we'll move progressively up the table. It may take an additional 60 seconds for rebuttals after all the other candidates have responded. A rebuttal is an opposing argument or a contradiction to what an opposing candidate has said. If you wish to make a rebuttal, I ask you just to signal me by raising your hand, and I'll recognize you once that candidate has finished. A candidate is allowed one rebuttal per candidate question. It would be at the discretion of the moderator. That's me. We will consider the overall time available, and we'll try to keep this thing moving as we go along. Each candidate will have 60 seconds for a closing statement, and we ask that candidates use their closing statements to summarize the issues they have already discussed and their vision for the position that they seek. These questions that have been assembled here tonight are collected from the membership of the sponsoring organization. No questions will be asked by the moderator that are directed to only one candidate or of a personal nature as all. So I'll let you now just start with our opening statements, and Mr. Armudie, please give us your thoughts here in these 60 seconds.
Hi there. My name's Tim Armudie. I've lived on the Isle of Palms for 33 years now, and I never thought I'd be standing here asking for your vote on November 7th. But I'm fired up. We are at a crossroads in our community. We are a lot of important decisions that need to be made in order to preserve what we have here now. And my goal, my platform, is Isle Palm residents first, pure and simple. Then we'll work from there. But we've got a lot of problems and situations that we need to address, and I think I'm the person to do it. So like I said, I've been here a while. I've seen a lot come and go, but we need to have caps on our short-term rentals. We need to manage them. We need our infrastructure looked at. There's a lot of different issues that we need to address, and given the chance, I'd be happy and honored to serve as a councilman for you guys. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Elizabeth Campson.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Campson. I'm the chair of your Board of Zoning Appeals. I've been on the board now for six years. I've been paying attention to city business from the cheap seats for about 10. And the foundation of my campaign is to enhance the existing character of the island as a quality place to live and to protect our natural environment. And that isn't a campaign slogan that I made up. That actually is our primary planning concept. I pulled it straight from our comprehensive plan. I'm committed to it. Every council before us, this council, future councils, they should be committed to it as well. It's our primary land use guiding touchstone. So I'm running tonight. That's my platform. That's who I am, and if you like what you hear, I hope that you consider voting for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Ashley Carroll.
I'm Ashley Carroll. I moved to this island as a young adult, and me right away that this is where I wanted to be. This is where I met my husband, and I started my career, and we're now raising the fourth generation of our family on this island. Our island community has always been one that values kindness and has been welcoming. However, the recent tensions felt on the island is not who we are. I want to be a voice that represents the whole community and all of the residents on this island, and I will be a voice for you on our city council. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Duffy.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event and getting it all together so that my fellow neighbors could find out what we're all about. Personally, I've been on the island for 23 years this time, had four prior to that in the 80s, and I've been in love with this island since the day I saw it. And the reason I'm running again is to just serve my neighbors. I'm afraid that the crossroads that were mentioned before is really an existential threat to this island. If we do not do anything to manage short-term rentals, the fabric of this island will be lost, and once it's lost, it will be gone forever. Thank you.
Mr. Scott Pierce.
Very small microphone. Thank you all for coming, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this event. We live in a beautiful and vibrant place like no other, but explosive growth in the area has put tremendous pressures on our home from the investment community due to attractive financial returns. As a consequence, IOP is experiencing growing stress on our infrastructure, services, and our quality of life. The math is clear. Since the IOP is nearly built out, every new rental investment can push out a full or part-time resident. Over the past 20 years, the IOP has had a 6% decline in residential population. The candidate choices are clear. You can choose candidates who support a balanced residential community or a continued commercialization path, but this election goes way beyond a single issue or challenge. You have an opportunity to elect experienced candidates that will hear resident voices, work respectfully, professionally, openly, and collaboratively on solutions, always anchored in the decisions for the residents, regardless of the issue at hand. I ask for your support, your help, and your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Popsen.
Do you hold down on anything? I don't think so. As Scott said, thank you all for coming, and thank you for the League of Women Voters handling this. We'll get into the issues, so just a little bit about me. My wife and Sean and I moved on the island August of 1985, so we've been here for 38 years. We've raised our son and our daughter here. This has been home. This is home. I'm a longtime parishioner, Stella Maris Church. I've been in the real estate, land development, home building business since 1985, and in the early 90s, I was appointed to the Planning Commission here on Isle of Palms. And since being on council, I've been appointed to numerous committees, the Rec Committee, Real Property Committee, and currently sit on all the, or sit on the Public Service and Facilities Committee. Thanks again for allowing me and look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rusty Streetman.
Thank you. I also want to echo my thanks to the League of Women Voters. They've been in existence since, I think, 1920, and they're a well-known, nonpartisan organization. I want to give you thanks for holding this forum here tonight. I want to talk a little bit about myself. I'm sure we'll get into plenty of issues, but a lot of you know me already, but for those of you who don't, I've lived here for over 39 years. I'm married to my wife, Deborah. We have two daughters, Stacy and Nicole, and a grandson, Clayton. And I'm proud to say that they have spent most of their life here, and I've spent over half of my life here, too. We relocated here from the upstate back in 1984, so we're hurricane survivors as well. I've served the last four years on city council. I look forward to another term. I hope I'm honored by you to reelect me to a second term, and again, we'll talk about other issues in a moment. Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy Ward.
Good evening, and thanks to the League of Women Voters, and thanks to you for coming out and showing your interest in this important race. A little bit of history about myself. I moved to Isle of Palms in January of 1986. I knew immediately this was my final destination. I still live in the same house as I did back then. Soon after arrival, I became interested in ways I could help the island. Several points in which I participated in our community, including serving 10 years on City Accommodations Tax Committee and almost 16 years on city council. In all those years, I've attended well over 1,000 committee meetings. My campaign to be reelected to city council as an independent candidate is completely self-funded, meaning I accept no contributions, no matter how small, either in cash or in kind contributions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll pass that mic back down, and we'll continue here. Candidates now.
Just hold your pause for the questions.
All right. Yeah. We're going to have 90 seconds now to respond to questions in the rotating order, and Ms. Campson, you get the first one here, and then each will be given a chance to answer the very same question all the way up the line. Why do you think you are needed as a member of the city council right now?
That's a good one. Well, I think I'm needed primarily because of my campaign foundation platform, which is to enhance the existing character of the island as a quality place to live. I think that a lot of councils maybe have a 180 perspective on that. I think we've kind of lost our way in the constant promotion of tourism, or we're not necessarily managing that element as well as we should be managing the residential nature of our island. Because when you have a great place to live, you have a great place to visit, and so I think that our primary goal should be to encourage that. And, you know, I'm concerned about the short-term rental situation here on the island. I've helped drive this petition that we're going to be voting as a consequence on the referendum, and, you know, we're doing that because we had a council that didn't feel the need to take that up and discuss it. So that's why I, that's why I'm running. That's why I think I can help just really firmly rooting council, this council and future councils, in the elements of our comprehensive plan that are, that benefit everyone.
All right. Ms. Carroll, same question. Why do you think you're needed as a member of city council right now?
So as a small business owner, mom, and a stepmom, I feel like I wear many hats, and I'm able to juggle many situations. I feel like a lot of us in this room might relate to that, but it's given me many tools that give me the advantage on a daily basis, and I strongly believe in the power of open communication and common sense reasoning, and not a desire, but the ability to listen well and show compassion for others. I believe this is mainly why I've been successful and also why I would serve our island well. We have many great, wonderful, and intelligent people on council now and running, but none of which are property managers, and I believe that would be a great asset to the council, to have someone who works day in and day out in the business. I know it works, and I know it doesn't, and my vision for IOP is an active and caring resident community that welcomes our visitors, and I am sure that we will keep that community strong and, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Duffy, you're next, sir. Are you familiar with the question? You want me to phrase it again for you? Why do you think you're needed as a member of city council right now?
Well, I'd like to say maybe I'm not needed, but the fact of the matter is, I am tenacious. I've done this job before. I know what it takes. I know how much work it takes. I know the hours that have to be put in in order for the council to be successful. It's a matter of listening. It's a matter of listening to all the residents and listening to each other on council and talking to each other on council so that we can actually hash out the ideas and let the ones that are valuable to the island and to the neighbors and to all the residents float to the top. I'm a man of action. I don't like to sit and do nothing. I like to respond to problems. I like to solve problems. That's what I do. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And next, Mr. Pierce.
I think one of the things that I bring to council is forward-looking thinking and planning. I have the skill sets for trying to get ahead of situations before they occur, and I think that's an asset that we need more of on council. I think every day we get in a council meeting, we're working down what I call the agenda instead of working down the issues. My approach is to get collaboratively working through issues, no matter how contentious, and have all of the discussion heard at the table. I feel like we're lacking that now, and I can bring that to the table. I'm very data-driven, as most people know, and I'm going to get to the facts no matter where they take us, and I think that we should get to the facts. I think we should share those facts with the residents of our community. A lot of times, we're having, I guess, lack of full discussion on all of our issues, and I just feel like we've got a little bit of a shutdown instead of a collaborative approach. So what I'd like to see is more voice for the residents. My job is to voice your intentions in my votes, and I try to do that every time I put my vote down. Thank you.
And we'll go next to Mr. Popsen.
Thank you. Why am I needed? I hope I'm needed, but I think my background in my business world of land development, home building, really helps me help the city with the issues that we're dealing with as far as drainage, the marina. We're getting ready to do the public dock. We're thinking about renovating the city hall, so I believe my experience and my background would allow me to help, and that's why I'm here. I also think that now I've got almost four years on city council, so with that experience, I think, also, I think is helpful and is needed. But lastly, my strong belief in property rights, that I've jumped in to fight for property rights, and I'm going to continue to fight for property rights, and that's why I think I'm needed on council. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Street.
Thank you. Well, I'm a confident person, but I'm not a cocky person, so I serve at your pleasure. I've been on council now for four years. I've been involved in a lot of committees, a lot of important decisions on that council. We currently have over 15 capital projects right now, either underway or soon to get underway, that need our assistance. I need to do that through your help, through collaboration with you, and collaboration with other council members. I intend to do that. We've done a lot as a council, not just Rusty Streetman over the last four years. It's been all of council, and I've served with a couple of councils during that time, but you're different individuals, and I think we've accomplished a lot. I hope that you trust me to think that I can continue to bring results to the table. I'm results-driven also. Over 40 years in the private sector teaches you to be results-driven. I operated over 80 supermarkets and 9,000 employees under my charge, so we knew how to get things done. So I'm asking you to please entrust me with another four years, and we can continue with the important projects we have going out there now and get those across the finish line and look forward to what we can do in the future. And I look forward to serving with whatever new council makeup we have, and again, thank you for your confidence in me for the first four years, and I hope I can earn it for the next four years.
And Mr. Ward, why do you think you're needed as a member of city council right now?
Well, I've served on council almost 16 years, as I mentioned, also 10 years with Accommodations Tax. I think in small-town, local government, experience does matter, and be sitting there for so long, my first term was in 1988 through 91, so I was on council during Hugo, and I've noticed that many, many issues just come up over and over and over again, like every eight to 10 years is circular. And I think that I've worked real hard doing my homework, making sure I'm prepared and understanding that maybe we've looked at this before and tried to help other members of the community in the council understand that so we don't spin our wheels so much. I'm also delighted that whenever I can, I like to give back to the community. Headed up several projects that I won't get into right now, but a lot of people know about them, public works projects on the, on the city that I had the tenacity to make sure that it got pushed through. I wouldn't let it go until it was finished. I think Lyndon Tucker remembers a little bit of that, but I guess that's about it, but thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll go to our second question. Yep. We're, oh, I forgot, Mr. Armudie. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Just making sure everybody's paying attention.
Oh, I dodged one.
All right, Mr. Armudie.
I don't feel like I'm needed, but I feel like I need to fill a void because I'm fired up about this. I'm not being, we're not being listened to, and I will listen to you. We need people with energy that can go to Columbia and fight for our rights. Our rights are being taken away daily, whether it be from state legislator or the realtor group or whoever is coming in here and trying to manage how we live our lives, and we need somebody to fight back. So I'm that person who can have the energy, the willingness to do it, and that's what I would like to bring to the table, something that I can work with council members, listening to people, and getting the job done. Thank you.
All right. Pass that mic to Ms. Carroll, please. Ms. Carroll, you'll be the first to respond here this time. If you are elected, what would be the first two issues on your agenda?
Oh, goodness. Okay. Well, there are clearly a lot of issues. Of course, essentially, everybody thinks that the STR issue is the hot-button topic this election, and it is important because we do want to maintain a resident community here and not be overrun with a, you know, with a lot of rental houses. However, I just feel like that's, that's something that we need to address. The referendum, I believe, doesn't protect our resident community like I would want it to, so there are solutions that we can do and just working together and talking it out and collaborating, collaborating together and looking at the data because I don't believe that we're facing any kind of existential crisis at this moment, but it's not to say that we won't ever, but it's something that we can keep an eye on. But there's no evidence to show that a cap would benefit us. Sorry. The other issues that I'd like to address are public safety. You know, we need to look at the pay of our public safety personnel. We're vastly below other communities, and we really risk losing the great staff that we have, and just showing them the appreciation and giving them the tools that they need to be successful is something that I would certainly want to address.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Duffy, if elected, what would be the first two issues on your agenda?
Well, we'll skip right past the STR because if the referendum is passed, that part will be taken care of, and the existing council will do whatever they will do during their session with that. But if I'm elected, I would like to see that we put in, put in place plans that address monitoring our beaches. We have had such significant erosion occurring down at the breach inlet site that if action had been taken sooner, probably could have alleviated a lot of damage to homeowners, to property owners there. It's in our local beach management plan that the city is to maintain a, a dry beach between low and high tide, and we seem to have failed on that. And the next issue, kind of going right along with water, is how do we manage drainage? We do have a lot of projects going on. There's stuff going on on Waterway Boulevard right now that some of us are suffering more than others, and I don't think that that's going to go away. I think that's going to be a continual thing, and it needs to be addressed, and there has to be a true long-range plan with regards to that. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Pierce, first two issues on your agenda if elected.
Yeah, the first issue would be, for me, I think, the short-term rentals for a number of reasons. One, if the referendum passes, there are some things we are going to have to address. There's been talk about, you know, the referendum is imperfect or what have you, but I believe that the referendum was, it was an incredibly written document by a well-versed attorney. It has all of the capabilities to get a citizens' referendum in place. What the referendum can't do in a citizens' referendum is it can't carve out zoning. So the reason that it's not in the, the front beach is not excluded is purely because a residential referendum from citizens cannot do that. Otherwise, it would be zoning. Only a citizens' referendum can address business licenses, and everybody needs to know that because this is one of the reasons why a lot of people are objecting to it. That is something city council, I went on the record, I actually tried to suggest that, and I, in my proposal, was to have a 33% cap on, on the island and exclude the front beach commercial district. That never saw the light of day with the current council. That's why, I think, a lot of the reason why we have this referendum. We should have never gotten to the referendum. So I would immediately exclude that. I would address that. I think also we're talking about the passing to the heirs. That's another thing I think we would address. The last, the second thing I think we need to keep our sight on is these PRD lawsuits. The lawsuit is still with us, and I think when you're selecting council members, you need to take a close look at who's going to defend that PRD. These are the, these are the development ordinances that were put in place last year. We really need to take a good, hard look at the candidates who are going to stand firm on that development PRD. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Popsen, first two issues on your agenda.
Thank you. I'm kind of like Mr. Duffy. I think the elf in the room, short-term rentals, is something we will discuss further and high on my list, but really, I get back to safety. We need, we need to keep the island safe. We need to support the police and the, and the fire, fire department to make sure that they continue to have everything they need to keep all of our residents safe, and I think the big issue with that is back to what Ms. Carroll said, is second on my list would be employee retention. We need to do a much better job in getting our police officers and our firefighters more pay so we keep them. We keep losing them to other cities, and that's just got to stop, and it's just not the, the public safety folks. It's our public works folks, it's our rec department people, and even our staff administration lab. So I think next year, this year coming up, we, we gave them, we had a good raise the last quarter of, of last year. I think it was a $5,000 bonus, and we did a 2.5% cost of living, and I think that's something that we need to continue. So I think employee retention is going to be a huge thing that we need to concentrate on. Thank you.
And Mr. Streetman.
Thank you. Well, the citizens will speak with the referendum. We'll know that November 8th as to what happens with the referendum. The new council at that point, however the makeup is of the council, will deal with that, and I think they will deal with it effectively. I think we did a good job in trying to deal with it this, this, this past session, but we got caught up in some things where we were not collaborating well, and we got to the point we were where the citizens called for a referendum, and they got the necessary signatures, so it is what it is. In terms of issues that I think that need to be done, my first two, is we need to address and continue to address the safety issues on this island. We've provided our police department, our fire department with a lot of, a lot of means on this island, equipment. on this island, equipment, manpower, but we still have a lot of work to do. We need to provide them better training. We need to provide them better benefits. They still are the lowest-paid, full-time employees we have. We need to take care of them, but they also need to take care of us. They do a great job now, but there's so many other things they can do from a safety standpoint that we can help them with. They need, they need our help. The second area is traffic and parking on this island. We need to find solutions because we'll be coming into the season shortly after the election, just a few months, and we need to have more effective solutions on what we do with parking on Palm and having traffic flow better on and off this island. Thank you.
And Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Two issues, there's a lot of issues, it's hard to narrow it down, too, but my, my two are infrastructure completion. We have 17 projects going on right now, and in government, sometimes things move slow and there's delays and everything, but these projects are, I don't know if any council is taking on as, as much infrastructure work as we have, and includes drainage, my old post-marina, beach maintenance and access improvements, and building and facilities, but all critical to the oil being of the city. I just think we need to keep following up and push these projects to completion and make sure they're done without delay. The second issue for me that is really important is the budget. The city is in great financial shape. We have excellent credit ratings. Our cash balances last month were $41 million versus last year, same time $32 million. We have excellent credit rating, and I just, as a CPA with 37 years' experience, I'd like to keep an eye on the budget to protect the financial security of the city.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ammudi, we'll get that mic passed back down to you. Yes? Yeah, sure. If you would, candidates, kinda keep that microphone so it's in the proximity there of being able to be heard. Sometimes it gets muffled if it gets too far away. Yes, sir?
The first thing I'd like to, to tackle would be the short-term rentals, regardless of if it passes the referendum or not, because they create a lot of different issues and problems that we have with noise, with traffic congestion, with trash, our livability of our, our neighborhoods. So just because it's just a short-term rental, there's a lot of things that fall underneath that umbrella, and those are some of the main concerns that I have for that. So we would have to, you know, take a look at that as well. But, and second, it would be parking. It's a big issue, parking and traffic. You know, we live with it, we put up with it during the summer months, but it's just getting worse and worse. And I don't think we really have a plan, other than just to keep coming, to keep coming and drive around and look for a place. I'd like to see us work with SCDOT and put the digital signs out, you know, out on 526 or on intersections that tell you how many parking spots are left on the island. And then when you see, oh, okay, there's 10 parking spots, well, maybe I'll make an alternative. I'll go somewhere else. I'll go to a park. I'll go downtown. I'll make a, a change. Instead of just coming out here and driving around the island, hoping you can find a place to park, and if you can't find a place to park, you make yourself a parking spot. So I think those are the two issues that I would tackle right off the bat.
All right. And Ms. Campson.
So I'm gonna echo what Tim and Scott said and Brian. I think that the short-term rental ordinance, that's the number one, because if that passes, there's work to be done, and it needs to be done quickly. And we owe it to our rental community to get everything ironed out before their next license year, and that'll be, you know, May 1. So, and for me, that means putting it back in the zoning code, you know, making sure that we carve out a purely commercial district for commercial use, exclude those, honor the rest, the balance, deal with the heirs, you know, make sure that everybody that has a license can keep their license. And so, you know, there's a lot of work to be done there. So that would be my first priority, assuming it passes. I don't know that I'll be elected if it doesn't, but, and then my second would be, you know, I'm a very procedurally-driven person. I'm a legal assistant in a law firm. I like policies and procedures. I ask a lot of questions, and, and, you know, a lot of times, it's, I don't, they're kind of inconsistent answers. We don't really necessarily have a policy for things. So whether it's how we deal with beach renourishment, how we treat our grant writers, you know, how we handle livability from the, whether it's code enforcement or police enforcement, I would like to see a really robust effort to get a bunch of policies together so that everybody understands that we're all on the same page. It's equitable, it's objective, it's policy-driven, and it's fair.
All right. Before you, if you'll give that to Mr. Duffy, he'll be the first to go on the next round of questions, but I see no hands regarding any rebuttals, so we're gonna move right to the third question here. Which IOP public service would you give the highest grade?
Well, having been the chair of the Public Works Committee in the past, and have seen what Mr. Pitts does with his budget, with his crew, and how he manages his people, and how he works extremely hard at keeping this island clean, I would give the Public Works team the, the A1 grade. They, because that is, I think, the most thankless job. I think it's the one that is not seen or appreciated the way it should be, and I think they do it diligently, and every time I see them out on the trucks, they, they seem to have some good humor about them, too. So, I mean, that's, that's who, number one. Do we get a second one, too?
Not according to the League of Women Voters question here.
Well, then, I will shut up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pierce.
This is a tough one, because no matter who you answer, you're gonna, you know, anyway. I'm gonna have to say public safety. We live on Ninth Avenue, and it's very clear to us, we're in, if you ever look at our workshops or anything, the heat maps are showing the majority of the activity right around our, our neighborhood. It's a very vibrant, robust neighborhood. Everybody's having a good time, but that also equates to the public safety department having to be very busy. So what we've seen in firsthand, and we were actually in the area during the April event, and the response and the professionalism and the teamwork amongst both, you know, both public safety organizations was just incredible. And not only that, but the collaboration that we have, our, both of our public safety departments have reached out to a number of the different municipalities and now have, we have co-dependent agreements or be able to share services when they need them and get services when we need them. So we have a very, very capable leadership team with Chief Oliverius and Chief Cornet. I'm very proud of them. I think they've done a tremendous job, and I think when we talk about planning and getting in front of things, they've been very effective, and there's a lot that goes on that we don't see, and I think that we should give them a big cheer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Popson.
Yes, Mr. Pepper, you're getting us in trouble here, but, I mean, the rec department does a great job, and, and Mr. Duffy's right about Donny Pitts and his group, but I have to agree with, with Councilman Pierce. Public safety, they're 24/7. They're at risk every time they go out on a traffic stop. The fire guys are, are at risk every time there's a fire call or, or trying to help somebody that's having a heart attack. And it, it just, it makes me nervous every time I hear the sirens going by, that they're dealing with something that could put them in harm's way, or somebody is in harm's way. So, and the fact that they're on call all the time, I, I have to definitely give, give them the edge. Sorry, Rec Department, and sorry, Public Works, and sorry, Administration. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Streepman.
Stop apologizing, Kevin. All right, I would say that, I would say that for ease of getting the job done, being competent, totally competent, it would be the Public Works Department. You know, we just recently awarded the Employee of the Year to a Public Works employee of Donny's, that's Robert Acero, who's done an excellent job and continues to do so, but they keep this island clean. But I also have to agree with Scott and also Kevin that the public safety departments we have have put a lot of effort, a lot of competent time and effort into building teams, and they've done it very effectively. And they've done it, you know, keeping us safe, basically. We've been short-staffed at times, we still have openings, we've had turnover at different times, but we've, and, and, and it's always a, it's always something in the mix there that they're always kinda struggling with, but Chief Oliverius and Chief Cornet have really taken it in stride, along with their department managers, battalion chiefs, and have done a really good job of, of pulling everything together. I think we have the finest public safety department in the Low Country, quite honestly, with great leadership, and I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud that we have really supported them in the past, and I guarantee you, whatever council gets here, we'll continue to support them in the future. They deserve it.
And Mr. Ward.
Well, it's another tough one, but it's interesting. When I first got in public service in 1988, I was a council member that was serving at the time, which I thought was old, who was, was probably younger than I am now. He told me that the citizens want three things, and they would like the council to, the government to pick up the trash, one, don't raise your taxes, two, and three, leave them alone. So that kinda leans toward Public Works, but I have to go with the Public Safety Department. I think as a government, our first priority above all is to keep our citizens safe, and they do an excellent job of that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ammudi, get your steps in here tonight. Which public service would you give the highest grade?
Well, this one would be, the new department that I initiate would be the public safety and the public work, they combined them into one, but just kidding with that. It would be, it would be public safety. I really respect the guys who put their life on the line for us and try to, and do protect us in times of trouble, and, and I see it firsthand on our street when, you know, a kid fell off his bike and hit his head, and the EMS and, or our first responders were there very quickly, and they watched over him until, you know, help arrived, and he ended up surviving, but it was a kind of a scary moment. I've seen it on the front beach where people were, you know, get struggle when they go swimming. So public safety is number one, but the unsung hero really is the Public Works people. You know, they're out when it's 100 degrees and 100% humidity, picking up our trash with a good smile on their face and just keeping our island clean. And I really, my hat's off to them, but public safety is number one.
All right. Ms. Campson.
This is getting kinda boring, so I, I do believe that public safety is probably our highest graded department, and that's fire and police. And, you know, for me, it's, I don't have a lot of contact with them, which really goes to show how lucky we are to live in this sort of community. I don't call the police a lot. I have not had a need for the fire, well, I actually did when my husband was having heart attacks, multiple heart attacks, and they were there quickly. But, you know, for a community like us that is small the majority of the time and then becomes huge in a surge of, a seasonal surge, it's a challenge, I think, like, unlike any other, that other municipalities don't deal with the level of work that our guys do and girls. So I, I really think that they are definitely unsung, and I do, I deal mostly with the administration. They are wonderful because they do, here, just locally planning, you know, everybody, they're great, too, so just wanted to give them a shout out.
And Ms. Carroll.
So, yeah, I was gonna try to say something different, but Elizabeth took it. No, just kidding. Public safety would definitely be my, my top one, but I will give a shout out to Public Works because I, I bug Donny all the time to go pick up trash, and I tell you, he's always there, and I'm super appreciative of the work that those guys do. And then, again, the Rec Department, I think Carrie is doing a fabulous job. I've never seen the Rec Department busier with more classes and events going on, and the difference is, is that they're packed, they're full. And it's just, I think she's doing a tremendous job, but obviously, public safety has the hardest job. They're underpaid, they have a tough job, and when you call 911, you know, the fire department is responding, and they're dealing with the heart attacks, the drownings, the fires, you know, and then they're also having mutual aid, so they're helping out on Sullivan's, and they're helping out in Mount Pleasant when called. It's, it's a tough job, and they have long hours and long days, long nights, and they travel a good, a great deal to be here. It's very difficult for them to be away from their families, so really think we need to appreciate what they, they're doing for our community. And then to touch on what Elizabeth said, our population is unlike any other community. We are changing population all the time due to rentals and things like that, and not until it's stopped.
All right.
Anyway, our aging population also requires, you know, a quick response and care, and I just think they did a great job.
All right, thank you. Let's pass the mic to Mr. Pierce, and we'll start this line of answers to this question. Bluffton, the town of Bluffton, recently passed a hate intimidation ordinance that would not deem hate as a standalone crime. Instead, it would add on to a crime where bias against a protected class was a contributing factor in that crime. Would you support a similar ordinance for the Isle of Palms? Why or why not?
Could you please read that question one more time? And I guess this is the one out of left field, yeah. Please read that question.
The town of Bluffton recently passed a hate intimidation ordinance that would not deem hate as a standalone crime. Instead, it would add on to a crime where bias against a protected class was a contributing factor in the crime. Would you support a similar ordinance for the Isle of Palms? Why or why not?
Well, in, in all honesty, I really don't know. I'd have to understand what the, what all of these factors are. You're talking about a standalone ordinance, you're talking about combining it with other factors. I believe that in any case, hate is a problem, and I think that we would wanna not have hate crimes on the island. I'm just still, I have to say, I'm, I'm not really understanding where this goes on as far as an ordinance goes. So do I support it or not support it? I, I can't really say at this time.
Fair enough. You don't, you're not required to use the 90 seconds. It'd take me longer to read the question than the answer. Are you, you good with anything you need to repeat it here, or?
Actually, I'm kinda like Scott myself, so, but, no, there's no place for hate at all, and I, I would, I would think I would support that, that it's, it's tagged along. A prosecutor could add that to whatever crime that they're convicting, so without getting a whole lot of details, I, just my first opinion, my first feeling is that I would, I would support that, adding it to whatever crime that they're, they're getting prosecuted for at this point, but would love to have more information for a better decision.
Fair enough. Mr. Streepman.
Thank you. I'm gonna punt on this one, too, to a large extent. You know, none of us want to see hate in any form, no matter what happens, and I think we all would do everything we can to make sure that if hate's a factor, that hopefully people will get judged according to what the intent of the crime was and whatever happened, and they will serve their penalty to the fullest extent of the law. But I'm like Scott also. I would have to know a lot more about the mechanics and what's, what's going into this bill and, and what, what their intention is. It just, to me, is not something that I would sign on to very quickly at all. It would have to have a lot of study, a lot of collaboration, and much better understanding on my part before I would sign on.
Fair enough. Mr. Ward.
I was listening closely, and I think what you mentioned was they were trying to get rid of hate as standalone-only ordinance and have it tied in with something else with another crime. I would be against that. I think a hate crime's a hate crime, and people need to reckon with the consequences of, of doing that. We have too much of that going on today. So with my initial reaction would be, I would, I would not want to tie that in with another part of the ordinance.
Fair enough. Thank you. And Mr. Ammudi, I'll give you a chance here as well at this.
I would need a little bit more information on...
I would need a little bit more information on, on that as well. But, um, you know, no one wants, uh, hate, and I think we'd all be better off if we, we could put hate out of our hearts and move forward that way. But, you know, a crime is a crime regardless of, you know, it, it's almost redundant, a hate crime or a crime. It's still a crime. But I, I have to have a little bit more information on, on that subject to, to go further with it, but, um, so.
All right. Ms. Campson?
Well, um, yes, I, being somebody that works in the legal field, I would absolutely need to read that ordinance before I, before I could comment on it, um, whether I liked it or didn't like it. Um, I totally agree with everyone here, hate is terrible. I mean, you don't ever want to be somebody that's carrying hate in your heart. Um, intimidation is even kind of a step down from hate, but it's still, um, unnerving as well. So, I mean, I, I would definitely want to see that, and I, I'd also say that I would, I would hope that if that is something that our police chief feels the need to add to our code. I know when he came in, he added a lot of, he asked, made some requests pretty quickly, uh, public safety things that were, he felt were needed in our code that he wasn't able to do. So, um, I would defer a great deal to our chief, um, on that, and just to see what, you know, 'cause he's in that world, and he, he works those types of crimes. And if that was something he felt like he needed, I would give it serious consideration, once I read it.
All right. Ms. Carroll?
Yeah, so I would have to echo pretty much what everybody else has said. Um, I don't want to repeat everything, but, uh, from what I understand, it's, uh, not having hate as a standalone crime, um, which I don't think I would support. I mean, I do believe that a hate crime is a hate crime, and it should be processed as such, um, or prosecuted as such. Um, so, um, again, I think I would just echo the sentiments of more insight is needed into what exactly that is all about, and, um, but I would absolutely not support anything that would take away, um, like, if it were a hate crime, that it would have to be attached to some other crime in order for it to be valid.
And Mr. Duffy?
I'm gonna ask you to just repeat it as a close, so everybody hears the, the question, 'cause it was only stated once, and so I would like to hear that. Oh, I missed that count.
That's all right.
Oh, 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 well, that, that's your turn.
Bluffton recently passed a hate intimidation ordinance that would not deem hate as a standalone crime. Instead, it would add on to a crime where bias against a protected class was a contributing factor in the crime. Would you support a similar ordinance for the Isle of Palms? Why or why not?
Well, of course, the, the devil is in the details. Uh, the, the term that kind of throws me in the question is hate intimidation. My wonder is, is this to take intimidation off the books as, as being a criminal act? I don't know. That's, so, it, it has me concerned. I don't know what the, the intent of that ordinance is, because it sounds to me, from that question, uh, and not knowing what, what that ordinance says, that it, it really is trying to lessen very serious crime, and that would have me concerned.
All right. I'm pretty sure I won't see a rebuttal, so. Let's go to, uh, Mr. Popson. And this will probably be, given the, uh, the hour, our last question, then we'll have a time here for some closing thoughts from each candidate, but... To Mr. Popson first. Charm, livability, family-oriented, community, generational investment? You've got that on one side versus traffic, parking hassles, routiness, short-term investment? Are, is it fair to characterize these as the two poles and the two opposites at this point of a short-term rental debate? Or is this a mischaracterization of what this conversation is all about?
I, I think that is the argument, uh, on either, uh, either side of it. But, um, uh, it just comes back to me that this is all about property rights when it comes to short-term rentals. And, um, I'm not gonna back off of that. You, yes, you have both sides of it, we can argue back and forth, what side's right, what side's wrong. But, um, it comes to me that I just can't believe that elected officials can tell people what they can and cannot do, um, with their property. And I think it'll eventually affect values, uh, and, um, I, I just think it, it, it comes down to that. It's, it's, it's all about property rights. Thank you.
Mr. Streepman?
Thank you. Mr. Pepper, could you go ahead and repeat that one more time? I didn't get all of it, I don't think.
So, what it's characterizing here are two different viewpoints for this short-term rental debate. Charm, livability, family-oriented, community, generational investment? You've got that on one side versus traffic, parking hassles, routiness, short-term investment on the other? Are these two poles of the short-term rental debate, or is this a mixed, mischaracterization of, in your opinion?
Uh, I don't think it's a mischaracterization at all. I do think that there are issues on both sides of this, uh, of this issue that you mentioned. Uh, in terms of, uh, charm and livability, uh, that side of the equation, I think that we can, we can all say that we want to protect the residential quality of life, so we don't want to have a situation where short-term rentals get in the way of us having a good, quality residential way of life on this island. However, that being said, I, I'm in the camp where I don't think we have that problem in the residential neighborhoods at this point, and, uh, and I've expressed that opinion through my votes and quite openly. In terms of traffic and some of the hassles, I think that comes from the people that come over for the day. The short-term rentals check in here, they stay for a week, and they shop at our grocery stores, they eat at our restaurants, uh, they may go downtown for a day trip or an evening trip to eat or whatever, but they pretty much stay where they are, play on the beach, go to our shops and restaurants occasionally, and they are not the ones that cause the trouble. The ones that come over for the day, most of them are great, but a lot of them don't leave this place the way they found it. And that just carries its way through with our public services and all the costs that are associated of having to clean up behind them. So, I think that that's the trade-off there, and again, I don't think the STRs are the, are the reason for the traffic issues.
All right. Mr. Ward, you comfortable with the question? You're good?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, just fine. Um, I think everything that could be said about short-term rentals in the debate has been said. But as a general rule, my feeling is, it's been my home for so long, that I think we're a lot closer together, and we have a lot more similarities than we do differences. I just wish that people would stop and listen to each other instead of, uh, turning up the volume on every single little issue. We should, um, try to work together.
All right, sir. Mr. Ammudi?
Well, I think the two issues do kind of butt heads a little bit on that, uh, with the short-term rentals and... I think the, uh, the two issues, they do kind of butt heads a little bit on, on polarization of the neighborhood. There's misconceptions of, of rental properties and the day trippers that come over here with the traffic and the, uh, trash and how they leave the island. But we do need to have a balance, um, with the short-term rental. We, we do need the cap, we do need to have a mix of, a healthy, stable mix of residential, short, uh, short-term rental, and second homes. The, the noise and the traffic is just, is part of everyday life, but it gets compounded on the weekends when we do have so many day trippers. And they do kind of intermix with each other, and some people get blamed when they shouldn't get blamed. So, I, I think we really do need to get, work together and get a plan that we have and we're comfortable with that addresses both the short-term rentals, the day trippers, and the trash and the noise and the pollution that they, they leave behind. So, um, I hope we, we can all work together and come up with some type of workable plan that, that's good for everybody. So, that would be, that would be where I'd start.
All right. Ms. Campson?
Thank you. I think those are certainly the perspectives of people. Um, and, but I would say that at this point in time, that isn't even really the real issue. Every other municipality around us has enacted limits. And I don't think that discussion anymore is about charming or traffic. It's what is gonna happen to us in five or 10 years if we don't enact similar limits? Um, you know, it's, 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 it's not a matter of perspective anymore. It's, it's a matter, it's gotta be a matter of policy going forward. And, um, you know, in 2015, we enacted a limit on day tripper, uh, parking spaces. So, we have a limit on that, and we can manage it in a way that is reasonable. We do not have a limit on short-term rentals, and I don't like our chances with the things being driven into this community when we're the only open market. So, I, I don't know that it's a mischaracterization exactly, that's people's perception, but I don't even think that's the issue anymore, honestly. I think it's just, we've gotten to follow other municipalities' leads, and we have to protect ourselves as well. And we have to do it in a reasonable manner that's fair to the license holders that are here, to the people that are in the business district. Um, and we need to honor that historic 33% by please voting yes to this referendum that sets our limit at 35%. So, that's what I'm hoping to see.
And Ms. Carroll?
So, I'm not sure that I agree that, um, it has to be charm on one side and traffic on the other. I really feel that, um, you know, taking away people's right to access and right to success, um, will eventually take away the charm of our island that we all do appreciate and enjoy by having the benefit that the short-term rentals provide to our economy. Um, I mean, currently, we only have 23.7% of single-family homes that have a license. Um, and not all of those are even active. So, it's, it's not a significant number, in my opinion. Um, and I don't include the condos in our residential neighborhoods, um, when I look at this, this data. Um, the data and the market economics are just not supportive of the caps, um, and it really should be a last resort option. Um, you know, government is slow for a reason, um, so that we don't rush to judgment and make decisions without considering all of the outcomes that may be positive or negative. Um, government's job is to have the least impact, um, on residents' lives, and we need to take that seriously when making decisions. You know, which is why also diversity is so important on council. Um, we don't want to have a group of just, yes, men and women. We need to have people with differing opinions, and, um, you know, again, I just go back to taking, the taking away of people's rights, um, is, you know, their ability to live out, live out their dreams, um, and I just don't believe that.
And Mr. Duffy?
Well, since that question is really about short-term rentals, um, I guess what has me concerned, and I, I concur with Elizabeth, that this is something to protect the island and to protect the island for the future. When New York Times talks about a Wall Street firm that has deemed short-term rental investments as the next great investment opportunity, and we don't have limits on that, we are at risk, pure and simple. Uh, it was mentioned here that there's concern about property values. Well, we have a wonderfully great experiment right next door at the sister island, Sullivan's Island, where they have eliminated them, and their property values haven't gone down, and people are still buying homes there. So, I think with regards to the impact on property values, I think that's a red herring. Uh, other than that, I just think we need to move forward, and yes is the only proper vote on the referendum.
All right. Mr. Streepman, you, uh, indicated an opportunity or a desire to rebut?
Do I get, do we get to answer first, or are we rebutting?
Oh, I thought Scott, it's my, maybe my fault, I thought you started with this, but that was not, uh, you've still got a chance to do this.
I'm losing track here.
Yeah.
So, am I okay to answer?
Yes, sir.
Um, I think the two items that you mentioned are symptomatic of the issue, and the issue is being, is the short-term rental imbalance. I started this project, uh, looking at short-term rentals in April of 21, when then-Mayor Carroll called me up in a panic saying, "We need to get this down to the planning commission, 'cause Dart's gonna take over the world on the island." So, we got it down to the planning commission, and we've been looking at it ever since. At the time, you know, we're, we've gone from 1,400 licenses to 1,800, over 1,800 licenses in one registration period. We have 1,737 parking spots, we've got 6,000 bedrooms for rent on this island. So, to say we don't have an issue and that the trend line is going otherwise, and to Ms. Carroll's point, the single-family homes are penetrated 28%, that's double what they were not long ago. And we have a 63.5% penetration on everything else. So, when you take a look at the whole island right now, we're at 40%. This trend is not our friend. And I think with everybody else locked down, you know, we are, we have got this big bullseye on us right now. It's investment community, um, Mecca, and they're gonna keep coming, because we are the only game in town. So, nobody on the referendum is asking to shut rev, them down, nobody's talking about taking revenues out of the city's coffers. We're talking about just putting it in place where it is to put the guardrail up so that we can balance that 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, and we're putting it out there at 35%. So, I think, you know, getting back to the, uh, candidates, I think you gotta look at the candidates here too, who we're gonna protect the island and keep those guardrails in place. Thank you.
All right. Streepman, you had a rebuttal you wanted to make?
Have you already spotted that?
I did. I started it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I, I do have a rebuttal on that. I, I, I think the red herring is, is, is trying to frighten people, and they're thinking, "We've got a huge overall problem with STRs on this island." Right now, we have over 1,000 units on this island that are built to be rented. Whether it be the condos, the townhomes, they're historical rentals. We don't have those carved out of the, out of that number. If you look at the residential areas, the last numbers I saw were about 24% that were short-term rentals. And there's no doubt about it, the recent rush on, on licensing is being done by people who are fearful for their property. They're getting licenses, they're holding on to it because they don't know what's gonna happen in the future. They're not renting those homes. So, I think the red herring is if we think that we've got a major problem, that we've gotta go out and immediately put a 1,600 cap in and trust the council to go back and fix it? Where have we heard that before?
All right. Anyone else want to rebut? Yes, sir.
There we go. Rebuttal. So, we heard, we heard again about, oh, sorry. We heard again about the infamous carve-outs. So, carving out part of the island penetrates the island further. You should ask every candidate here, "When is enough gonna be enough?" They should give you two answers. What's the number that you're willing to cap, and what percentage are you willing to have the total island penetration? I can't, I've never heard that from any of these candidates, and I think you need to ask that question. My answer is 1,635% all day long, and I think that retains the balance. So, I think we gotta keep pressing the candidates to tell us, "When is enough enough?" Thank you.
All right. Let's pass the mic down to Mr. Ward here first. So, we've got time now for closing comments. Uh, we're trying to do all we can to get us out on time, and so we're gonna start with Mr. Ward and work back this way.
Okay. We need a few more rebuttals. We're okay on that.
All right. I, I didn't see anyone that said they wanted to, but, yes. Mr. Ward, I'm gonna let Mr. Duffy have a word here. Sorry, guys.
Well, it's, it's kind of interesting whenever I, I heard the, uh, the, the 1,000 number that was just mentioned with regards to, uh, they were built for short-term rentals. Uh, the only thing that I can see that was ever built for short-term rentals on this island is in the commercial district, it's the sea cabins, and I don't think that there's 1,000 of them there. I don't know how many there are there, but it's in around 400, so I'm not... I just want to say that I think that that's a mischaracterization of, of, of the facts and the data. Thank you.
All right. I'll take the mic and give it to... Did you want to say something?
So, I just have to say that the referendum at 1,600, I know people say that it's not gonna affect city revenue or anything like that, but I really feel like over time, it actually... it actually will decrease rentals on the island. When you've got people that are going to be buying property, and we're already over the cap number, so you can't get a license. And who knows how long that wait list is going to be? So the people that are likely going to be buying property moving forward are going to be independently wealthy, and they're not ever going to have to rent their property. So over time, you're going to see less and less ATAX being taken in, in which we will, you know, suffer the consequences of that because we're going to have to make up the difference somehow in the money that's being brought into our city. The Sullivan's Island comparison also is a little unfair. I mean, when Sullivan's Island took away rentals, they had less than 100 back in 2000. And it's like taking away something that they never really had to begin with. They never depended on the income from STRs and to support their economy and to help keep their property taxes low. So, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Campson.
So when I started hearing, you know, that it's not, it's a run on licenses, I asked repeatedly for the information from our planning department to see what, who those people were, who were asking for these licenses. And I did the research, and I looked, and 80% of them were new rentals that I found. They were not people making a run on licenses. At that time, it's probably been over a year ago now, we had a program that we ran that deemed what active rentals were, what active licenses. And it had this algorithm that it used to determine, and at that time, it was around 1,200. I asked for that number again. We're over 1,400. So, you know, that's whatever this algorithm is that says that it's an active rental. So I believe, and I hope, that we've got some room there. Once we get in and look at what's going on, and that we're not really over this cap, but once we kind of weed out the people that had no intention of using it, there's going to be some room. So I'm hopeful for that, and she's telling me to stop.
Okay. You're a very wise woman. All right, so we've got 60 seconds now for closing comments, and we'll start with Mr. Ward and work our way back.
I have a rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you. You'll have more than 90 seconds on this ride home. All right. Yes.
Sixty seconds, I think, is what I said.
Yeah. So, Mr. Ward? Yes, sir. Closing comments.
So I'm always thinking about ways I can give back to our community in consideration for all the island has done for me all these years. I consider myself extremely fortunate. Serving as your council member has indeed been a privilege. We have the best facilities and staff of any municipality in the Low Country. We also have the lowest resident property taxes in the area. I got my property tax bill today, and my Isle of Palms portion, the Isle of Palms portion of my tax bill only was $214. And what I get for that is police, fire protection, garbage pickup, world-class recreation center, marina, and the beach. So I feel very fortunate. And we keep our property taxes low because we have tourism money. I respectfully request your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
All right.
Streeman. Thank you. Well, I think we would all agree in this room that we live on a beautiful, vibrant island that is full of life. We have a lot of great residents here. We have a lot of great visitors who come to the island, and we have a lot of things that are going on that are very special that anybody, not only in the Low Country but throughout the state and the country, would really treasure having in their home places. I am asking for your vote for another four years on council. I hope that you will give me an opportunity to finish some of the work on your behalf that we've started. We've got a lot of projects going on, as we mentioned earlier, and there's a lot of important work ahead of us. I do think that we need to work very heavily and effectively on collaboration, not only with our council, but within our community. And we need to find ways to give other people who don't live here full-time a better voice on the island. They can't vote, but they need a better voice to weigh in on some of these issues that we have, particularly with property. And that's something we ought to be working towards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Popson.
Obviously, this election is centered around one thing, short-term rentals, a cap or no cap. If you believe that elected officials have the right to tell you, you property owners, what you can or cannot do with your property, then you need to vote for the candidates who have that same belief. If you believe, like I do, that elected officials do not have the right to tell property owners what they can or cannot do with their property, then vote for me and the other candidates that feel the same. Don't be a capper. Vote no. It's been my honor to sit on city council for the last four years, and with your help and your vote, I'll get another four. Thank you. And thank you for the, and thanks again to the League of Women Voters, and thank you, Mr. Pepper. And thank you for everybody coming out tonight.
All right. Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming and thank Legal Women Voters. And it's great that I'm sitting next to Kevin. We go by yea and nay. That's our, you know, on most of the issues. So I think the choice is very clear. You know, you do have four candidates up here that are going to, I think, protect the residential quality of life and take into consideration that is more investment, do we need more investment on this island? I think we've got enough investment on this island. And for, I'm going to go back to my opening statement. For every new investment property that comes onboard, we're going to likely end up saying goodbye to a resident or a second homeowner. That's just the math. We've got a fixed footprint here. So what I'm going to do is ask for your vote. I want to ask for your support. If you want residential-centric versus commercial-centric, then I'm, you're candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pepper, for your time. Mrs. Pepper, for putting up with them. And thank you all for coming out. It's been a good evening. And I just want to say, y'all are going to help me break a tie, okay? I have one win and one loss on my record. And at least I now know that I won't go to my grave with a tie, you know, one way or the other. But I am asking for your vote. I think it's important for our community to preserve the neighborhood and residential quality of life, just like it has in our planning documents. That's what we're about. If we want to change those planning documents and deal with that as a community, then we should change them. But as it is now, we're a residential community, and we should keep it that way. So please vote for me.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Carroll.
So, you know, being resident-focused versus commercial, I really kind of disagree with that because I live here, we all live here, obviously, and I'm raising my family here. And I certainly don't want to become an island that's overrun with rentals and raise a family in that kind of community because it's not why I moved here and why I chose to live here. So I kind of, I kind of take issue with that a little bit. But the job of our city council is to decide policy, and it's a great responsibility. So we need to elect council members who are going to be able to, sorry, help people that, not just those that agree with them and support them, but everybody. They need to be able to demonstrate effectively how to handle a conflict or be able to agree to disagree. And we need them to be able to de-escalate the rising tensions in our community. So I respectfully ask that you vote for me, and I will be a voice for everybody on this island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you to everybody for coming. This has been great. I appreciate every opportunity I'm given to speak, and I'm just going to embrace that as well as my charge of enhancing this island's residential nature. I think that that, again, makes it a wonderful place to visit, a wonderful place to do business. And it's all about balance. You know, the number-one response from our strategic plan survey was, and that went to everybody. It went to residents, it went to visitors, it went to business owners. They wanted us to mitigate the impacts of tourism. And so we have limits on parking, beach parking, and I think that it's time that we have limits on short-term rentals because, you know, I don't, I don't, we are an island, but we do not, we are not in a bubble. We are going to be impacted, we're impacted by traffic, we're going to be impacted by investment rentals. And it's really incumbent upon us to think about that. How do you want your island to look in five years? How do you want it to look in 10 years? And make your decisions accordingly. And I hope that means you vote for me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I too like to thank everybody for coming out, and the League of Women Voters for putting this together for us so we can voice our opinion, we can listen to you guys, too. So I'm very passionate about this. I get kind of emotional about it because I really do like this island, I love this island. And I like to see it stay the way it has been when we first moved down here 33 years ago. It was a quiet little sleepy town. We knew our neighbors. Everybody got along. It was great. And I've always been taught to leave somewhere better than when you first got there. So that's my goal with being on council, is to leave the Isle of Palms a little bit better than when I got here 33 years ago. I would like to have a legacy of, yeah, we turned this island over, back to the residents. We have a nice, stable resident mix of short-term rental, second home, and investment properties. So I would put this out to real estate companies, real estate businesses, maybe stop pursuing the investor crowd. Now, market the families, single families, or the families that want to actually live here, or the second home who wants to retire here. So I just, if elected, my goal would be to make Isle of Palms a better place. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Let me take care of a couple pieces of housekeeping here before we wrap up. A lot of thank-yous going around tonight. Let me thank the audience for being here and so involved and so cooperative and so attentive. We encourage you to study the issues carefully, learn about the positions of each candidate, and vote for the candidates of your choice November 7th. You can use the League of Women Voters Vote 1411. That's a tool that's found on the League's website. You can there check the status of your voter registration. You can find your polling place. You can learn more about the candidates' positions. Contact the Charleston County Election Commission about absentee voting and early voting. There's a phone number there. You can vote at charlestoncounty.org. We want to thank the Exchange Club here on the Isle of Palms for graciously permitting us to use this wonderful site. Many thanks to our county, our city council candidates tonight who came in and gave up their time and expertise. And we'd like to give them all a round of applause, and thank you for being here.